Going to call the June twenty second special meeting of the water public works to order. The purpose of this is to discuss the water main assessment done for us by GMB. So at present, we have all the board members, the general manager, assistant general manager and Sharon. And the GMB staff. So with that point, I'll turn it over to. Who's doing the lead?
Mark, I'm sorry. We're going to get our PowerPoint presentation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And Sharon, how many people do we have? Anyone along?
Mike and Chris from downstairs.
Hello, Chris.
You got to share a screen. And then how did you get this?
Did you do the little two errors of?
For my set. All right. Good morning, everyone. Today, we're going to present water main assessment study. I know we're sending out a report, I guess on Friday. I don't know how. How many people have canceled through it. We'll give a presentation today and. Answer any of your questions. Before I get started, I want to introduce Elliot Hurdle to my right. He may be a new face to some of the board members here. He is an engineer with us, works out of our Sparks office primarily, but we recruited him for this project for some help. Elliot did all the sample acquisition, organization, the rankings, assessment, study, et cetera. And then Ben Hearn also, I think everyone knows Ben, Ben. He did a lot of the modeling work and other work associated with the project. And those guys are going to participate in the presentation also. So just a little bit of history. So I think in two thousand one, we were contracted to do this. Water, water main assessment and my recollection and maybe the board's recollection is we were going full steam ahead on the Cedar Avenue project. We had an estimate of thirteen million plus dollars to do three phases of Cedar Avenue. And to the board's credit, they said, whoa, let's take time out here and look at, you know, all the water made in the entire. System before we go and make some sort of expanded thirteen million dollars. Charlie got a plan he ran from the state. And we started this work in two thousand twenty one, and here we are now. Took a couple of years and but we're ready to present.
None of us were here, the original two thousand one.
Twenty one.
Didn't you say you started graduation?
Twenty one, two thousand twenty one. It's when this project started. It's when this. Yeah, sorry. So you know, the, the water mains in the board system is an asset, just like any of the other assets. That the board has, and I know that we have an active asset management program. And this water main assessment study can be considered another tool. You know, for the management of the water mains kind of along with the asset management program that exists. So. Again, going back to Cedar Avenue, this study focuses on the iron pipe in the little system. Okay, and. If you look at, if you look at other studies that are done in large cities and towns, et cetera. The focus usually there is more on the structural integrity of the pipe. They're trying to predict. The life cycle, they're trying to predict the remaining life in certain means so they could stay ahead and. Have, have sections of town replaced before they start getting a high frequency of water main breaks, et cetera. That historically has not really been a problem in Los. There have been some, but they're pretty, pretty infrequent water main breaks. Really, the problem associated with the iron pipe in Los has been the water quality issue and. The issues related to tuberculosis, right? So tuberculosis is a form, and I'm not a corrosion expert, I'm not a chemist, but it is a. It's a form of corrosion. It's bacteria based and oxygen driven. Unlike corrosion where people had like a nail and you had it out in the salt air over a period of time, the nail would disintegrate and. Be left with nothing. Tuberculation is actually the opposite, even though it's a form of corrosion. It's a buildup of iron oxide on the inside of a pipe. Okay. And with that comes a whole set of problems. There's hydraulic problems. Because with the buildup, you lose the diameter. It's bringing a very rough internal surface. But then related to that, which has been historically the big problem. It's been the quote dirty water. I'll just call it dirty water, the reddish brown water that comes from the iron oxide that. That gets mobilized when there's water main breaks, hydrant openings, valve openings, any disruption in the flow. This iron, this iron oxide sitting there and it mobilizes and. Comes out and people drink water. I need, I need to say.
If it's bacterial based, are we introducing bacteria into the?
No. So what I, what I need to make clear is this reddish. Dirty water iron oxide does not present any health problem. There's no health problems associated.
We're sure of that.
That's natural.
Yes, we are sure of that. Okay.
Tuberculosis is very different than just regular corrosion. So tuberculosis doesn't present any problems with wall thing or structural integrity, if I got from your report also.
It does not. I mean, we, we went down that road and it's, it's difficult, difficult. We, we looked at the thickness of all the water mains samples, right? And measured it and we tried to compare it to the original thickness. It's difficult to do because of the age of the pipe. It's. Hard to determine what the original thickness is at all times, but. And, and the samples are in our office at the closest examination under magnifying glass. It's really hard to say that there's been any really lost.
It's all surface. It's not.
Correct, correct. So, you know, the goal of this study was to rank all the iron veins in town and. That, that was always an objective of ours as we were doing the study as we went along. And we were hopeful that at the end of the day, the results of this study can be used to prioritize, you know, future replacement projects.
Of course, most of that pipe is the older pipe. It's not live.
Correct, correct. So I'm, I'm going to give you, there's going to be a slide here basically. Tells you the breadth of the, of the problem. There, there's a lot of iron pipe in the, in the town of Los, so. Next slide. Just a little background on iron pipe and I guess evolution to. You know PVC, HDP, et cetera. So cast iron pipe. Began being used in the early eighteen hundreds, I guess as cast iron came on the scene. And in Philadelphia, and, and this is an interesting personal story. My father was an engineer with the Philadelphia Water Department his entire career. From when he graduated college to when he retired. And he became the chief of the design branch, Philadelphia Water Department. And when he retired, they gave him, like they had made a plaque for his retirement. And it was a section of an old wooden water main that was, went back to, I don't know how they know this, but it went back to Ben Frankford beer. And it wasn't an active main, but they guess digging it up in different projects. They cut a piece out and varnished it. And it was pretty neat. And he was like super proud of that.
That's cool.
It was cool. Yeah. So.
We gotta give you a section of our pipe.
I'll take it.
So do we have any wooden pipes there?
Not that we're aware of. We haven't run in any yet. We haven't run in any yet. So. It then in the nineteen fifties, the ductile iron pipe started coming on the scene. And then in the nineteen sixty five, it, it became the standard in the AWA standard. So. Now ductile iron pipe is still used in many, many places and we're going to use it on some of our upcoming projects. But all the ductile iron pipe, not all. Most of the ductile iron pipe that you, we purchased now for water applications is cement line, has a thin line in the cement on the inside. Which prevents the tuberculosis. Problem from occurring. We don't have a great breakdown in our records of when it comes to the ductile iron pipe that's in the system. We know that it's ductile iron, hard to say if it's cement lined or not cement lined. We don't have a great breakdown there, but. We do, we didn't have a number of samples that are cement lined and you can see the contrast. It's, it's a very, very great contrast between. Cement line versus the gas.
Did you, did you kind of cause any ductile that wasn't line?
So, but it, it's hard to say. We think, we think there's a couple of samples in there where it's ductile iron. And but not lying. I didn't know. Yeah. I know. Nowadays, it's actually hard to purchase, and I know this from. Prior experience, my old project where they were using large diameter ductile iron pipe in a blower application. And it was really hard to get unlined ductile iron pipe. And they had used previously the line, ductile iron pipe, cement line and with all the ventilation and air going through it dried out. And the cement lining cracked and caused all kinds of problems. But most of the ductile iron you get now is standard cement line. So. Then in the last fifty years, of course, there's been a move over to the plastic pipe PVC, HDP. Et cetera. And I obviously that's a direction that the board has been going here at most. So this next slide. Like I said, gives you an idea of the breadth of the problem, right? So when you look at the, you look at the percentage of iron pipe, cast iron and ductile iron. Add those two together, it's like forty or just about forty four percent of the pipe in the system is still iron and. Still a pretty good ratio of cast iron to ductile iron. And it's a total of what? Twenty seven, twenty eight miles of pipe. So that gives you, to give you a feel like the Pilot Town Road project was a mile. Plus or minus of cast iron, like they got replaced. You know, that was a three plus year project.
Should we have done that project?
Should we have done it?
Looking at this video?
So, so that will. We'll get to the end. So basically, I don't want to steal all Ben's fun there on the conclusion section, but. Essentially, you know, there is the assessment of the condition and then there's the, the decision of what pipes to do. Replace first, second, third, fourth. And they might not always be in sync. Because there might be other factor, not might be, there's always other factors involved with that decision. Other projects that are coming up. Coordinate city projects, coordinate Delta projects. Whose, whose reality, who screams the loudest, et cetera. Pilot Town was an interesting. Evolution because remember, I, I recall at least what started and drove that was the lead, lead issue. And there was a, the project just seemed to evolve, right? Because it was first, it was going to be just replacement of less services. And then it was like, wow, getting in there and doing less services. And then it was going to be. How about we get rid of the old water main, some of the four and six, which was nineteen ten circa nineteen ten, nineteen twenty. And then it evolved into, well, you got this other water main there. It's nineteen fifties. We're doing all this work anyway, should, so. That's kind of how that all evolved.
Thank you. You're a better politician than I am.
But again, that just, again, this slide just gives you a feel for the scope of, of the crowd. So with that, I'll get into the, you know, nuts and bolts of the study, which started with the data collection. And Elliot is the fellow here that did most of that legwork. So I'm going to let him speak that.
Morning, everybody. Again, my name is Elliot Hurdle. So to start with the data collection, we were able to collect twenty seven samples around the city. Two of those samples were photographs from previous projects while the other twenty five were physical samples. Some were provided. By Robin from the town. Others were collected as part of this project and other ones, they were laying around from previous projects. And. If you can go to the next slide, please. This is exhibit two, I believe. This shows a map of all the locations where the samples were taken. So you can see it's a pretty widespread throughout the city. And again, the blue circles, the, there's only two of them on there. A little hard to see on the screen, but those were the photograph. While the rest of them were actual physical samples. So. All these pipes were processed, you know, as Vince mentioned, measured the wall thickness, photographed all of them. And then we looked at adult records to determine when they were installed, what the material was and diameter. And then through Ben's model, the hydraulic model of the system. We were able to gather the average as well as maximum flow and velocity through the pipes. And looking at all this data, we came up with the chart on the next slide. And again, a little hard to see here, but this was all twenty seven samples. With their location, you know, all the information we collected, the size, material, install year. And this was the basis for ranking all of the iron pipes in the system.
Oh yeah, I've got a dumb question. So how do you collect the samples without. Intacting the flow of water through the pipes?
So for the ones that we did that were active, we do what's called a wet tap. So you're able to drill into the pipe and collect what we call coupon. Kind of looks like a Pringle cylindrical. And then at those locations, we installed a fire hydrant. Right on top of that. So we weren't shutting down the main. We were able to collect a sample and add a fire hydrant at those locations.
So in some places, in a few places, we did, we did shut temporarily, shut the main down and cut a piece, just a section of the pipe out and. For a repair section back. So we did that in a couple of places. One place I think the board decided, since we were going in there and taking the sample. Why not put a, a fire hydrant in that location? That was that okay, that location. So we got. You know. With bag for a while.
You can see her.
Yeah.
Did you put one that?
No, no fire hydrant. See, we just, but we did cut a piece out.
And more of a wet tapping is a technique we use routinely on many projects, so we don't have to discern.
You basically put a shield around the pipe. So that when you drill through, it's all contained and you can pull the plug out.
Yeah, great. Part of my education.
Yes, it's quite an interesting process.
Yeah.
Really is. So to continue. Once I gather all the information for the pipe, what we did was we created a survey to rank all of the pipe samples. So utilizing the photos. From the pipes, we presented it to multiple people in GMD. And we asked them to rank it from least to worst in terms of condition. And if you go to the next slide, you can see a few examples of the pipes. As Vince was talking about, this one has that concrete lining in it, which is the white stuff there, white stuff there. And you can see the condition of the pipe. I mean. It looks a little rough on the outside, but in terms of the inside, there's no tuberculosis at all. And the next sample, this is actually one of the worst pipes over on East Market Street. This main actually is one of the few breaks that we've had here. And you can see the tuberculosis of that pipe. It's, it's pretty crazy.
Elliot, that ductile iron cement line sample, what, what do you know off the top of your head, what the age of that section is?
Let's see Savannah Road, we can check on this.
Nineteen forty five?
Nineteen forty five.
So there's an old section there with the cement lining. You see, there's no.
How long does that last?
How long does the ductile iron?
So, no, no, when, when you, when you put the. Yeah. How long does it last?
No, no, it comes from the factory that way.
It does come from the factory.
I understand. But how, how long does that pipe last?
You know, I, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, there's, there's probably. Their ductile iron pipe came around in the fifties or so that, I mean, there's. Probably not enough data yet to say how long it lasts. The actual cement.
That's pretty, pretty long. I don't remember anybody taking anything out because.
Yeah. So there is stuff in the literature, the research on the, just the longevity of, you know, even cast iron pipes. And it's all over the map, really. And it's. A lot of the times it's, and, and thankfully, we don't have this problem here in Los. It's, it's related to the soils and the corrosion, corrosivity. Of soils and it's related to water condition, et cetera. I mean, corrosion engineering is a field unto itself. Like I said earlier, you know, we're thankfully, that's, doesn't seem to be a, a problem in Los. I suspect it's because of the sandy soils. And they're not corrosive in nature. So you might have some cast iron pipe that lasts fifty, sixty years and you might have some that's. In excess of a hundred, a hundred and fifty years when you do the research.
So to continue with the photos of the pipes, we were able to present that to members of GMB. Who have experience in the field as well as engineers and we were able to get, I think we had twelve individual people rank them. And if you go back to that chart for me. On the right hand side, the color recorded is the ranking of the pipe, the average ranking through all of the people who ranked it.
So, and I would say, sorry, no, I would say on that ranking. Like, you know, we had twelve different individuals do it, I guess, you know, not, I guess independently, they did it and somewhat subjective. But there was actually very, very good correlation or consistency among, amongst the ranking. So in other words, it's not like somebody ranked. The, the worst sample, you know, as the worst and somebody ranked it as, you know, in the middle. It, it was very good consistency in, in the ranking. I mean, it was not, obviously, there's going to be some differences, but like I said, it was pretty consistent among the twelve.
The two that stood out in here was in Zon Savannah, this two segments of two samples of cast iron. That are ranked very, very good.
So. So we. Some of that, it probably is related to us not being sure if it's cast iron versus ductile.
So I'll just add into that. So most of the data that we have for the material is coming, material and age for that matter, it's coming from the water model. So it's just based off the best available data we have. So it's somewhere, some plan at some point in time called out that main is either ductile iron or cast iron. Without digging up every single pipe, that's the data that we have to go off of. There's what's on the plans.
Are you trying to tell me that nineteen oh four, we didn't have good configuration? And those people.
So when the, when the twelve different people put this together, I want to do the analysis, which little, I won't fully understand that, but that's okay. Did you take into consideration how many houses were involved in each of these runs?
Not, not in this. This is just purely looking at the twenty seven samples that we collect and saying. This is the best, this is the worst, this is in the middle, et cetera. We'll get to that. I think, I know where you're going with that. We'll have a little bit of discussion about that.
Okay.
In a bit.
Thank you.
Where there's a dash across there, what's just a dash?
Those were pipe samples that were fired a while ago and no longer in use. And so a lot of the age of velocity wasn't collected because it's no longer part of the model. Or the information was not available.
Okay, so you didn't notice the one on nine Savannah Road pipe, what the material was or anything? And that was. The one that was.
We had samples been since been replaced. So it's no longer, because it's been replaced, it's been updated in the model. The old pipe data is not in the modeling.
So Elliot, of the twenty seven, so we didn't actually physically have twenty seven samples. Some, some of them, some of them were photos that were taken. During some past projects. So how many, what was the breakdown?
It was twenty five physical samples and then two photos. And so, but during the ranking process, it was pretty evenly matched as it were. Everyone was looking at photos of all the pipes. Whether I took it of the physical samples we had or the, the photos from the project, they were all ranked similarly. And so based on this ranking, we were then able to take the characteristics that I found before, such as the age, velocity, flow. And we're able to make trend lines of this data based on the ranking. As compared to the data and try to find some trends that fit with what we're looking for. And so the biggest trend we found was age, as you might expect, the older the pipe, the worse condition of it. And we also found some slight correlations between flow as well as velocity of the pipe, which we pulled from the model. And so using these trend line equations, we were able to extrapolate it in all of the iron piping system.
Question, there's a reference to water age. What does that mean?
So water age is how long the water will sit in the pipe. So say you have a water main that's a dead end in a court per se. If no one's using the water in the court. The water will sit there and it's something we like to look at to see, you know, how much that pipe is getting used. And how frequent it's getting used and how long the water's sitting there.
School Lane, Rodney, Orne Kill, Harborview.
The, the water age correlates to essentially the, the chlorine residual left in that line. If it, if it's older water, then it's going to have less chlorine residual. If it's newer water, it's going to have closer to your, your one part that you have in the system now. So what we were trying to explore with that is that, you know, is, does. Chlorine residual help or hurt the quality inside the pipe?
If the water is at the dead end of a line and just sitting there. Does it really just sit there and never gets circulated even slowly? Or. You know, what, what's the, how do you know that it really just sits there or it really does get mixed?
So via our water model, we, we are able to model how the water moves through the system. And to some degree, you know, it probably moves a little bit down at the end, but for the most part. You know, once the water migrates in there, it's not gonna, unless. Pressure differences bring it back down to the vein. It's, it's going to be held in to that dead end by the pressure of the rest of the system.
I mean, it's one of the reasons why, you know, we're moving all the pipes so that you don't have stagnant flannel.
Does that affect the accretion of particulate in the pipes that it's a dead end?
So we, we wanted to explore that because we had some hypotheses going into it and. On the water age, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, when we looked at the water age, we going in, we thought that might be the case, oh, wow, water's sitting. Longer in these pipes and not moving as much in these pipes, there'd be greater tuberculosis, but that. We did not see that trend in any of the data. Yeah.
Well, you, you're talking about the tribulation. You're talking about actually sedimentation.
Yeah, precipitation.
You know, the, and you do have a section, you, you talk about hydrant flushing and, and how long it takes to get. True, and I think that's where you were coming from is the sediment in the.
Actually, I was thinking of, I had a house guest a few weeks back who left the water in the tub. Um, and went to sleep and in the morning there was all this brown particulate. So I was thinking.
So Tom makes a good point, so yeah, we, we were, we can only look with these samples at the degree of tuberculosis. But it, it's not a bad hypothesis that, you know, in these areas where the water doesn't move as much that. Some of this iron oxide settles and maybe the amount of that in those pipes. Or in those sections are, is more hard, hard to tell, it's hard to tell. And then, of course, we're going to have a whole discussion on, you know, um, the complexity of evaluating all of that. And we have a section on anecdotal observations. To demonstrate how complicated it is to predict where all that stuff's going to go at any given time.
And one of the things about the, the segmentation is, and you've got a section here in the report, we're talking about visit S P I.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, it's kind of counterintuitive. But like, if there's any perturbation in anywhere in the system, like someone running over a fire hydrant. On the town site, they see it at S P I farm. And it's not even on their line, so there is, it's in, hopefully, well, the pressure balances in the system and. So localized. Is not necessarily one hundred percent local pipe. It could be from other places.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
I, I would also just like to caveat too that, you know, it's hard to say. So, you know, in that chart, you see all the different average flows and ages and. Velocities, it's hard to say that that specific pipe has experienced that condition for the entire length of its operation. You know, we're operate, operating off of the model today. Things could have changed over the course of the career of that pipe. Um, so, you know, we don't have knowledge of exactly how the system was built out and flows have developed, so. You know, a pipe that has low flow now may not have had, always had low flow or, you know, might first.
But someone's pipe in his career is time for retirement.
Yeah. What, what impact might the new water tower have on? This exploration for, you know, the flow and so on, if any.
It, it has the, it has potential to have impact, and now you want to take that?
We can jump in together, I mean, in general, the water tower's not changing the system, but. In, in theory, the water tower's not changing the system except for providing more pressure. However, it is going to change the characteristics of the flow in the system because now you have. Water sources, maybe I'll say more, more constant because you have two sources of water now coming in. Obviously, the well field produces water at that approximate same location, but it's. The well field should be coming one and off. Now that you have the tower there, it's going to be a constant kind of. Lux in, in the system. Will it change the tuberculosis? No, will it change how? The system velocities operate, probably not drastically. But it will, it could change that this pipe used to flow in this direction, now it flows in that direction, potentially.
Okay, and that, and that's all you can predict without doing measurements and that, that doesn't. The end is. We'll see what it might be, but it's not a negative impact, it's probably more positive than anything else.
I would say the benefits of having that stored up in there is much more than the, the negative.
I bet you could rerun the model once it's in place and see like theoretically it's going.
I mean, we, we can run the model now and say, you know, this, which we've done, we're, you know, we're working on figuring out all the details of the tower. But it, it's, it's, you know, the model looks at things in snapshots of, you know, this condition, that condition. So there's, there's millions of different options to say, you know, this demand is X here and it has this effect. Or a water main break there has that effect and.
And it's not only the water tower, I mean, you know, like we talked about putting a cross tie. To tie new road in, I mean, that will change the flow in the system.
Correct.
So, I mean, you know, all these modifications.
And, and I maybe just to excel on, we, we have done the modeling to say, you know, where in the system a tower is. You know, optimized, maybe not optimized, but a good location for the tower, so we've done that, looking at the existing location felt that. You know, provides good benefit for the system.
Thank you.
And before I pass off to Ben to speak on that a little bit, um, the ranking of the pipe. So, you know, once we collected the data and had the twelve people rank it, and once we got the trend lines. Um, we were able to extrapolate these trend lines to all of the pipes in this system. I can specify, I think there's about eight hundred and eighty one pipes in this, iron pipes in the system. Um, and so we took the equations from the trend line data.
You say iron, are you talking about both?
Those cast end up, yes, um, and we came up with a formula to rank each individual pipe based on his characteristics. And so the formula, we made sure to weigh it appropriately based on the correlations we found between each characteristic and the rank. So like I said before, age was the biggest correlation we found, so for the formula to rank the pipe, the age made up eighty percent. Um, of that equation and in turn the ranking. Um, the other twenty percent was made up of the flow and the velocity, fifteen percent flow, five percent velocity. And so this is how we were able to take real world data from the samples and apply it to all of the iron pipes in the system. In a way that, you know, is backed up by data, backed up by the, um, quality and the condition of the samples we were able to take. And then again, apply it to all the iron pipes in the system. Um, and that is how we achieved the ranking that we did, um, and, you know. We'll get into a little further, there's some more charts and tables that, um, dive into that a little bit more. But, so we're gonna pass on to Ben.
Just one question, and I may have missed it, maybe at your instance, let me see. Did you guys look at the size of the pipes? And with all the, the growth that we had, that the pipes actually need to be better than what they, not better, bigger than what they are?
I would say that was not a part of our, you know, to me, that's more. Maybe like, um, I'd say I'm maybe a master plan of like growth in the system and replacement. That's, that's relates to probably the other factors that apply to priorities of projects. That are, you know, ever changing as opposed to just rank prioritizing things based off of condition.
How often do you rerun the, the model, I mean, like, like Glenn, uh, Tower Hill comes on, I guess it is on. Uh, I mean, or do you, you analyze that before it's built to make sure we have enough? He is so. So you rerun it every, I mean, major addition to the system.
Yes.
Yeah, I assume that's part of the. When a project comes on board that.
So that kind of answers your question, I think. But they haven't, they didn't dial it into the map that we have, we, we could say that, yeah, this development's going up and we need to have bigger, better pipes, but that's, it's not in this map.
It's more of a problem with the sewer where you're collecting sewer and running downstream to the waste water plant. But in that case, all that extra flow from, say, a tower hill may. Push the side of the downstream plate that it needs to be up. With the waterman, with the water system, it's more of a looped system, so you don't run into occasions where Tower Hill comes. Wants to. Uh, we got an upgrade. With meetings played down Savannah Road to a twelve inch play. Uh, Ben can, uh, correct me if I'm wrong when I say that, but I think it's a little different from the, on the water side than the sewer side.
Is, I'll say added, it is a little different, we look at, you know, the way we kind of understand. The sizing of the ma, if, if, the sizing of the mains, we look at it internally and then we look at the hydrant flows. If we can't achieve the hydrant flows based off of just what they're putting in. Then we have to expand out into the system and say, what do we need to change to get hydrant flows? The appro, to appropriate measures to this, you know, development or, you know, whatever, whatever's going in at that point.
Ever readily can find if there's a, a pipe somewhere distant from the project? That has to be replaced, that should be replaced, that you can blame on the, on the development of the new, new. I mean, tough to, uh, so to develop of the.
I mean, I just wonder. I haven't seen that, I mean, mo, because of the systems set up and the looped nature of it. It allows water to be pulled from different locations. So the looping is good if it was just one long line, like a six inch and then Tower Hill came in and you said we needed to have. You know, we wouldn't go from like a six to a sixteen to be able to serve that area, we, we, you know, we're limited that back. I haven't seen where there's that. Constricting like pipe some far off location.
But if you could somehow. Get the tuberculosis out of the iron pipes that would expand diameter, the working diameter of those pipes.
Yes, correct.
And, and reduce the roughness coefficient.
Yeah.
So I guess to Barbara's point that, is there any way of removing tuberculosis from?
So there, yeah, there is, I, I don't know if you wanted to say that to the end, but, um, there's technologies, right? There, the, there's, uh, pigging is a common practice, pigging is when they go into. The water main, the cast iron would made a mechanically remove, um, this tuberculosis. Sometimes they pig and then reline the main. Either with cement lining or with the C I P lining, but like we did on the sewer and like we did on the Eppel pipe, I don't know. If you recall the project we did on the Eppel pipe. So there are technologies available that could, uh, remove the tuberculosis. But to remove the tuberculosis without lining, you're, you're, you know, you're just destined to have the same problem in the future.
And you're, you're battling, boss, because one of the, one of the projects that we've talked about is the Monroe Crossing, um, under Kings Highway. Or Freeman Highway and it was, it's a, it's a Del Dot right away and Del Dot spec is you have to line it. Uh, I mean, you have to, you have to put a, uh, a casing underneath the road and the existing pipe, it's not an issue. But if you put a new pipe, you have to case it and there you're talking about a right away that's two hundred and seventy feet and you gotta put three hundred and seventy feet of main in. So then you get into this cost conducive nature and so we talked about taking the main offline, when you take the main offline, it doesn't help. It actually hurts you when it comes to fire flow, it's fire hydrants. So then the question was, is that a project that would be conducive to picking and lining? And then that gets into the cost and usually a majority of your co, costs is in temporary water service for. Whoever you're taking offline, in that case, you only have two people that you would be taking offline. Which then adds to the almost pilot like project that you could kind of take on. Cause we've talked about it on Bay Avenue Extended, which would be from the Children's Beach House up to, um, the Yacht Club. All that water main actually is underneath the majority of all their driveways. And so that was one of those that we kind of thought, you know, is that a project that would be kind of a.
Cost equation, there's, you know, mo, demo, utilization fees and, you know, for a small project. It can be as much as the project is. So, you know, if you're gonna reline the whole system, then we're gonna come and do it for, you know, three months. Versus doing individual lines is. I don't know what the cost.
Yeah, I mean, just to expand on that whole discussion, it really depends on the specifics of that project, you know. And, um, the lining versus replacement, and I know G M B did a project in, I, I believe it was Oxford. Oxford or Cambridge, I can't remember, but I talked to Catherine, who's product manager on that project, and they actually spent more to line it. Than they would have replacing, but the town wanted elected to go that route because it was an old section of town that had the cobblestone streets. And they did not want to get into all that restoration and disturbance of the cobblestone streets. But by the time they set up a temporary water system. And, you know, with the lining, you have to, you have to have access points to the main to get in to clean. So you have valves and fittings along these lines, so if they're in the way, you can't really. Go through them and mechanically clean, you gotta, you gotta stop there and pick up on the other side of that. So, again, it depends on the specifics, now I'd say we, we did line that Eppel pipe, which was sixteen inch diameter. And, you know, we probably had three to four inches of the total diameter lost. The size of the tubercles and that, and that was around nineteen sixty age pipe. And I don't know how many, remember, I remember pretty well. They, they did the mechanical cleaning, the picking for over two week period of time to get. And we were, we were, of course, the issue there was the lost diameter causing hydraulic problems with the. Discharge from the plant, so we were driving them to get as, restore as much diameter as possible. But still, this took like several week process to remove all that. And the other issue there was that the sixteen inch mining that we did, it's heavy and it only has a certain strength. So we had to cut access points, we put manholes out in the marsh just so they would pull the liner through. And I think they were only three or four hundred foot spacing. So, you know, like I said, I, I mean, that whole decision of using that technology versus replacement is really. Project specific or, or in terms of economics.
And especially with the older, the cast iron pipe, I mean, it's certainly end of life.
Yes, and then, yeah, well, I mean, depending on the line, so some of the line, like the C I P lining. Theoretically, that will provide your structural integrity, but things like cement lining. And even, I know there's other like epoxy based chemicals, which are very, very costly, but you're right, they don't restore any of the structural.
The I P is what?
Pure in place. Thank you. So, okay, so that brings us to function based on Earl, I think this may, this section here may speak to what you asked about Earl, so when you. When you research some of these water main assessments that are done and, like I said earlier, a lot of them, not a lot of them, most of them are really focused in. On the integrity of the pipe and trying to predict the remaining useful light of, of the pipe. But there's two ways you can go about it, you can look at a function based assessment or a risk based assessment. Now, the function based assessment is a simpler approach that basically looks at specific. Priorizations, characterizations. So an example would be like a function base should say, okay, well. The, the assessment, the oldest pipe is the worst or the pipe that's in the most corrosive soils is the worst or. Smallest pipe is the worst or smallest pipe is the best, a risk base looks at the. You know, the condition. Times the, uh, the, the likelihood of failure times the consequence of failure, so. Extrapolating that out to the water quality issue, and I think this is where you might have been going, Earl. We, we, we went down this road and tried to go down. We, we, we went down this road and tried to go down this road. So we, in other words, we tried to say, well, where would we get the most benefit? What section could we remove that's going to have the most improvement in terms of water quality? You know, uh, maybe not necessarily the, the pipes that are ranking the worst on the survey. Maybe there, maybe there's somewhere in between or whatever. And we had then did all the modeling. We had some, and we're going to get into this in the next section. We had some anecdotal observations of water main breaks, et cetera. We had some theories going into our modeling. But what we found is it's a very complicated problem because there's so many variables to it. We knew the water, we knew the Lewis Waterfront Preserve had a water main break. And we had some ideas and theories going in. We had real data in terms of who got impacted with the dirty water. And then attempted to model that post, you know, post event. And it was very difficult to get consistent results that were consistent with the observations. We had some theories like, well, hey, what happens if you turn a valve over there? Which we know causes problems every time the board turns it back, or you open a hydrant over there. Maybe it increases the velocity of flow in these mains and that mobilizes the, the sediment, or maybe it reverses the flow and that caused it. And we went down, we did try to go down all those roads. And at the end of the day, we found that the problem was too complex in terms of modeling because there's so many different variables in that. It's a snapshot. It depends on what the demand is at the given time that event happens. And then at the, so at the end of the day, we basically, this, this study really leans towards the function based type assessment.
Good question on the water main break at the water, water, Earl.
Lewis Water.
It was Waterfront Preserve. It says started, the water started to leak out at a high rate and it eventually shut off. But if you, it eventually shut off.
Oh, then you got.
I was gonna talk about some of the different observations we had and that's the first one. So the gas main, the gas company was installing the main, they hit the main that started making it leak out at a high rate. The board responded, well, I don't know if it was the board or the con- George Lynch, George Lynch responded and it shut off the water coming into the development. So that's.
So someone shut it off.
Someone shut it off. Yeah, it just didn't.
Yeah, right.
I should have made that a little more clear in the report. Sorry about that. But um, in general with that, with that scenario, as Vince was alluding to, we, you know, we had some of the real world data. Some try and model that in the system. And in your um, report, there's a table that kind of looks at, we looked at key pipes, so you know, surrounding. I'm not saying surrounding waterfront preserve, but key pipes that would provide water to waterfront preserve. And looked at, you know, their normal condition versus what it was during that pipe break. And we can see that in that, in that table that some of the velocities increased. Obviously the flows increased. Some of the pipes changed direction, but just because that occurred doesn't mean that that point is where dirty water came from. Cause then there's so much more rest of the system that's also responding to that. Well, I'll just call it a water demand, that water being break at that point, that waters meeting, you know, running to that point.
One of the reasons why they use this is because we got complaints in areas that were PVC. And so the correlation between having complaints with rusty water and PVC areas doesn't really make sense. And, and actually came out of this is we not only ran it here, but then we went out in the field and identified a valve that was shut, that was containing that dirty water and wasn't allowing it to circulate. So it's kind of a culmination. Cause we do get, I mean, even Polatown Village and um, the reserve, you still get every now and then you'll get a complaint out that way. And in this case, it was, it was about that was shut for another project that was restricting flow from circulating and continuing. So it kind of created a pocket almost.
Was it something that somebody forgot to open or were they still needing to shut it?
No, it was never open. We, so we paint, the way that it works is we paint them white and we paint them blue correlating with open and closed. But these, some of the valve clusters, like this valve cluster was actually off the road and in a grassy area. So if, if you paint it and then grass grows, it's, it's just one of those that goes in the SOPs. But you know, just by way of this example, since we've had this conversation, you have the school doing all the work back at middle school and, and the new elementary school. And we've gotten complaints on DuPont because of the work that's happening in that area. And that was one of them where we talked about replacing that pipe. And through this conversation, we've kind of identified that if we do the Burton Park Painter and Johnson project, we can extend an eight inch main and, and basically take that line that goes across what will be the new track and field area out of service and still maintain pressures. And then you don't have an access issue with trying to get back there because it kind of weaves its way back. There's a lot of utilities back there. I'm stealing the thunder.
And that's all good. So one of, one of the other thing, anecdotal observations we had, you know, Anglers Marina, they put in their water main along or in, yeah, in Anglers Marina. And you know, we had to connect to that, flush that main to get it brought up to um, the right chlorine, digital, disinfectant, all that stuff. One of the things we noticed um, during that was it had a duration of two hours of flowing before the water got cleared, you know, so it was flowing and Vince can speak to that. You know, they started flowing, it was initially clear and then it became, you know, dirty for a period of two hours, which is, yeah. A long time expecting, you know, obviously with that areas kind of being PVC, but you know, that just compounds the issue of waters coming from somewhere that's creating that dirty water scenario. In this case.
So we're talking about over two hours.
What kind of like?
With volume of water.
That was only a six inch name down, eight.
I checked, was it a ten?
No, no, it's, it's. That piece that they put in, in Anglers Marina.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And um, so, yeah, I think it, I think it was a, an eighth and they were flushing through the dead end hydrant that they put in. She had a six inch lead. And the fellow R, RPR that was on there said initially it came out dirty, which it always does. And then it cleaned up. But then as they kept waiting for it to really clear up, it got worse and that it took over two hours, you know? And the take home, I guess, message from that is that, you know, um, and all, and all these observations. It's mobilizing this sediment and whatever from far distances sometimes, you know, and, and I know Ben's going to talk about the uh, what SPI Pharma indicated to us in that one event. So um, and, and the same observation in the hydrant plus flushing, when they flush hydrants, I, Russ Neal, we had Russ Neal follow the fellows around when they flushed back in November. And he had a bunch of dudes that he took in observations and they start on the hydro testing, they start closest to the water tank and work their way out. And um, bay breeze, which is all PVC in there. Water ran dirty for quite some time. So obviously the source isn't bay breeze. It's somewhere else and it's mobilized at quite a distance sometimes. And that's the SPI Pharma event. Right? Um, they indicated that a hydrant broke over by BB Hospital.
The, like Cape Pen, Cape Pen.
Okay.
Yeah.
High school, sorry, sorry. It's the high school. And then, you know, by the time that person drove in to SPI Pharma, they were already shot in the water now. So they already received, that's a good, that's a good distance.
That was just one anecdote that they provided.
Correct.
General, so.
So just, just maybe expand on that from, so we met, go ahead.
Does uh, SPI notify you every time they have an issue? Do you know pretty much?
We asked them to notify us when they have an issue. It, it didn't happen nearly. I mean, when we met with them, they kind of told us that they frequently have issues and it's tied to something that's going on.
So now they're gonna do it.
Yeah, that's what we asked.
The converse of it is just that, you know, we're notifying them before any major since, since the presentation. Because it, it's a trip, it's a costly disruption to the area.
And then to expand on that further, yeah, so they have, they're your biggest water user, which some of you may know, that they withdraw or demand on average, three hundred and sixty gallons per minute, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, they can get, it can get up to probably five hundred gallons a minute. Um, so they have such high quality requirements of their water. They have a bunch of turbidity meters before it comes into their plant or into their process. And if it gets to be at a certain level of I guess clarity, you know, they're gonna stop the process because they, they're prob- they need their product to be, you know, the furthest way that they want it to be. They can see it immediately. When they have dirty water come in, their product turns.
Do they do any additional treatment when they get, typically?
I don't believe that they do.
I thought you said they filter through sand over there.
They use sand filters.
Oh, they use sand filter?
Depends on the practice.
I can't believe they can't have ultra filtration devices to protect the product.
They do. They have, they have filters on the inside. That's why when, when, if they had heads up, they can shut systems down and not have to go through and replace filters. Cause not only do the filters cost money, then when they're down, it's like seventy-five thousand a day.
And in the interim, any product that's been contaminated, they have to dispose of. Um, yeah. So just for, you know, the waters used for uh, flushing the product before it's packaged. So it's used in the actual production.
So that flushing order, obviously, that go out, pipe to the bay.
Yeah. So while they demand a lot of water, they give us no water back.
Yeah, I know they don't have the sources.
Yeah.
They're not tied in.
So it's, uh, it goes out to Cape Pen, Lomond Park under the fishing pier. And that's where the supply and discharge is, right?
Yep, that we take on minerals out of it.
Yeah.
Magnificent.
So Vince kind of talked about the hydrant flushing. You know, we noticed various areas, you know, rusted out there, knows various areas that low dirty for a while, some were unexpected, obviously in the PVC area. All this just to say, it makes it complex to understand where dirty water's coming from. We have theories and thoughts, but it's it's hard without, you know, you can place turbidity meters throughout your system to get an idea, but you know, the value of that versus just starting to replace main, you know?
It's a good PhD dissertation.
Really? Just kidding. No, it, it would take a lot of study. Trap that down.
So if you can jump at two slides. So the, the culmination of all this, you know, report of the rankings and the formula applied to each pipe, we took those and, and broke that down into twenty percentile groups, just to kind of like identify, you know, good, better, best, worse, worse, you know, something of that nature. And um, so that culminates into the following slide, which is um, you know, a breakdown of each percentile group in terms of total length cast up in cast iron and total length in terms of ductile iron. Um, you can see that, you know, in the it, I'll say in, in this case, the higher numbers are the worst ranked pipes. So at the bottom of your chart, you see ninety-two percent of the percentile group is cast iron main. And that's, that's kind of indicative up into the three hundred to three ninety-nine, two hundred to two ninety-nine, you have over ninety percent in each group. Um, some of this is all in general, you know, it's a approximate lengths and, and the whole, you know, based off the best available data we have in the model. So that's why you see probably some of the ductile iron is in that, you know, it could have been, you know, that was just what was on the plans for some odd reason that it was old pipe and noted as ductile iron. Um, it's, it's all, we'll, we'll say semi approximate. So this is, we'll say in the tabular form, and on the next slide gets into the, the more visual application. So we laid out the water system. So everything on that chart is cast iron and ductile iron. And it's in the same percentile group. So in this case, red as Earl said, or red is bad. And that's the worst ranked pipe in the system. So you gotta see it's kind of disparate throughout the system, but there are pockets where it's more combined. And that's where, you know, one project was done back in the forties and, you know, that's the section that's, that's old.
Um, just so everybody can understand, so one of the things that we, we've trying to think of this, we're struggled with from a budgetary standpoint is when you get into and you can see you have Cedar, Del Dot, DRBA, Del Dot going down Cape Pen Open Drive, King's Highway, Savannah Road. When you get into those areas, your costs go up. It's, there's, there's, you, you, you can, you can look at the data that shows the costs go up because of, you gotta meet Del Dot standards. So when you look at this, if you were to put all the pipe in town in this map, which are, there may be a map, I don't know if it's the next one or not. You have two clusters. You have basically the Gil's neck side of King's Highway, and then you have the Polatown side of Savannah Road. That's all PVC. So you look at the concentration of iron pipe is really in the heart of town and in your Del Dot right aways.
Is there a road assessment on, in this report as well?
You mean tying in the city street replacement stuff? Uh, I don't think so.
We did not include that. Um, certainly can, I, I would say, you know, once, again, that's relates into that other factors, you know, priorities changed. And you know, obviously things change, like the Monroe project was supposed to happen much, you know, already, but now it's been pushed off.
But if the city has to open up over, do pave a road, that would be helpful for us.
Correct.
In that part.
Correct. So, so we wanted to take, you know, this, this map and, and take it one step further and Vince can jump in too. We, you know, we wanted to apply that to what your current capital, five year capital budget was or is. And we look at the pipes in that general vicinity of each project and say, based off of this, this is how we would rank it on condition.
You're doing fine, I go ahead.
So in, in terms of um, you know, the nine potential projects on your list right now, um, my, my assumption is that these projects were, were based off of the knowledge of water quality issues in the area, history of breaks, you know? Um, age of the water main, as well as some of these are paired with other projects such as like the Monroe project. There's the, the uh, King's Highway project, which is relating to the whole potential dualization of King's Highway.
So we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a PowerPoint uh, slide there, but if you go to exhibit four in the appendix, uh, that basically shows that an outline of, of, you know, the approximate scope of each of those projects. So some are quite larger than others. And that, that you can see on exhibit four.
So it's the last eleven by seventeen in, in the sheet there, kind of identifies the limits of what each project is. And the, the way that we ranked these, um, you know, we took, so each section has many different pipes in it. So we took each pipe, this pipe length and I'm just gonna go through the process. We multiply that by the rank of that pipe to get a total essentially rank per foot and divided that by the total footage in that project to give you an accurate represent, more accurate representation, just taking the average of the number of pipes. That's confusing.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, maybe they lost.
It's a first ranking by.
Yes, it's, it's, it's. How do, how do you want?
Well, we, we wanted to factor, we wanted to factor in the fact that some projects are much bigger than, involve much greater length of water main and greater length means more sections of pipe that are ranked. At, for example, school lane is one, one length of pipe and it ranks pretty high. And then you look at some of them like Cedar Avenue, which is a long section and it doesn't rank as high. But that's because there are some pipes within that that are ranking well and pull the average down. So. That's why we did it. We we took into account the total length of pipe in those particular projects.
So just as a baseline round and. What was the? And not to hold any of it. It's total cost to go replacing all of the ductile iron and cast iron.
So I, I mean, if you say there's forty-four miles of pipe in there, right, then and and this is really rough, but. Um, I'll town road was about a mile and on just the water side, I took the sewer out. I forget what the number was.
Three and a half million.
Three and a half, three and a half million. That's just construction cost, not engineering. And it's, it was a good three year. I know we had COVID in the middle of that project, but it was a good three year plus project. So that kind of gives you an idea of the scope.
You're like, there's, there's twenty-seven miles of ductile or iron pipe in the system. So if you'd say.
I get twenty-seven, yeah, sorry.
Say three and a half million times twenty-seven, you're looking at eighty million dollars.
Yeah, cuz that's the number I said, uh, using your guys' numbers was it was ninety million dollars for place all the ductile iron and cast iron. And sixty million for place just the cast iron. Approximate. So that's, you know, just from. If we were to say tomorrow, we're gonna replace all of it. That's the.
Scope.
Yeah, so now you're you're switch this in a little more perspective, I think.
But like. Earl's comment. Earl's comment about how many people business impact for did you, there is no rating for that.
In turn, I mean.
For cost versus people served.
So like if you were to replace.
Avenue, it it only it's.
Yes.
It's really hard because like.
The cost per person and the benefit of the person.
It's it's hard because because it has such far reaching impacts. So you know what I mean? It's hard to predict. Um, who's gonna benefit from any particular project?
The fire main in front of Cape Cod Lomond High School affecting S P R farmer.
Yeah.
I mean, you, I think you could say like school lane being a dead end is probably gonna be not as impactful as, you know, one of the other projects like King, like the new road. Six inch old main like that does, it has the potential to impact more cuz it is part of your main.
Yeah.
Line distribution system.
I would even go as far as saying the larger diameter mains are gonna add more impact. So if you. You replace those, there's less work moving. Through through those at least. But it's complicated because it's not always like the large diameter may may not be the source.
Put a bigger pipe on uh on new road versus six inches.
Uh, that little piece there probably, yeah, we don't, we don't put six inch mains in any anywhere anymore.
Is that an impact fee?
An impact fee to some of the developers.
Pies aren't big enough to carry the other water.
The next developer.
That goes back to my question earlier, I mean, we we've put a lot of money in that we're not being reimbursed for that losing this cost by group. So how do we kind of balance that?
Well, we change our impact.
Well, I would say new roads not caused by growth. It's more that it's just an old plane that's undersized. It's been there a long time. It falls into that more of that category, being sued, stressed by burden.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, when Ben does the review of a new development, Tower Hill, when it comes on. He runs the model and he's checking just to make sure they they need fire flow requirements, which, you know, e- even with that six, they do. Now, replacing that six and putting on developer, that's. You'll get some pushback cuz that's a different issue.
They are eating on capacity in general, either it's not exactly that time, like they're taking capacity from other places. So.
True. Yeah, but that's the producer impact. I mean, it's ridiculous.
That's how we happy.
Yeah, we have to. We're not, we've not been captured.
That's a tough thing to capture that. I think if there was, you know, how how do you? How do you measure what Tower Hill did does to the other end of the system?
But we need, we're gonna come up with a new.
Yeah, I.
Flat impact fee that.
That's gonna be the challenge to get it, get it right because there's so many things, most of the stuff that is driven by development. I know it's old, but they probably live with a lot of it, if it wasn't for all this development coming in.
I I'm actually on your side on that one. I think, you know, if we see. A pipe downstream that's. Needs replacement for whatever reason and development's coming on board. I think the board ought to try to get reimbursed for it to do the project. I mean. I'm just gonna speak frankly, the developers are making, gives them the dollars and I think they ought to. You know, help the city of Lewis and Lewis Board of Public Works to maintain the infrastructure that makes this place inviting.
Yeah, probably charge it by then.
So Chris, can you, how many zeros are in a zillion? Sorry.
In answer.
It's a technical term.
That's, that's where we are with the report. You know, I don't know if you have any more questions, want to discuss something in further word.
I think it's a great report and I think it's a really, really dope.
It, you know, ideally, when we set out, we 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 wanted to get to a point where we can say, okay, here's a list from one through whatever. And here, here's what you should do first, second, third, but that is really difficult, tricky business. And I will say a lot of the research that I did on these water main assessments and and they spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in these large cities and stuff. And uh, at the end of the day, they all say it's very, it's still not an exact science and it's tricky business to try to say. Oh, there's only so many years of lifetime left and that is real. And they spend all kinds of money doing all kinds of. Lab testing and ultrasonic testing and things like that.
Have you checked this where they are?
I have not. Somebody in our office.
Well, I had a question on page eighteen. Um, I think there's a typo. We are talking about the high ranking of the Cedar Avenue Phase Three project.
Ah, so we, we, I'm sorry, we missed that. Uh, so. So the phase three Cedar Avenue is not on the five-year capital budget.
It's not, okay, it says it does appear.
So Cedar Cedar is a placeholder on the five year because when you look at, when you look at how that capital budget was structured, it's like. These are what we know as of before we did the assessment study. The whole idea and it's it's on next week's agenda. I don't know if we're gonna really accomplish too much, but the idea was is that we're gonna take that. And narrow it down to see what we can actually accomplish cuz you can't physically do those projects in that amount of time. So the idea is to put probably only one or two projects because with the Del Dot kind of standard of not being able to work in the summertime when you're in Del Dot right aways. You're talking three-year projects on some of these, but then some of them are tied to. The Del Dot right roundabout project and do, does the board take the first step and do our section of. Kings Highway or do we wait for the Del Dot work and then we do our second? Same thing with Cedar. The pipe that we got back from Cedar doesn't necessarily say, oh, man, we got a problem. That's what we need to do. But then I got people like on Burton who are dealing with the school lane or with the new school going in that we get complaints for. So then you're trying to identify what makes more sense.
So do we have costs associated with each of these?
We have.
Or placeholder costs.
We put, so I put placeholder costs for what we think. I mean, Cedar's fifteen million. Flat out. If you want to do Cedar at one time.
Cross streets.
That's all, that's all three phases.
Yes, but East Market is is probably, I I think I will put my money on probably one of the worst, if not the worst sections of pipe in this.
And that's why Cedar Phase Three, not on that list of nine projects. That's why it actually ranks higher. Iron meaning worse condition than any of those nine um is because of the. That market street area really dragging down, you know, the the average.
And so we, one of the things we did is is we had a conversation with, we're hoping to see how they tackle, you know, their water quality issues. And one of the things they brought up. Is they do basically block by block every year. So they say, you know, this year we're gonna go and we're gonna do this block of water main. And they're gonna replace this section of pipe and then they're gonna stop and then next year they're gonna come back and do the next block and the next year they do the next block. So it's two different approaches. Do you tackle it by bite or do you tackle it by just complete project to to do everything at once?
So just remember, phase three is all the cross connects.
No, phase three is basically down East Market, Massachusetts.
Yeah, it's shown on exhibit four.
Well, it seems to me that that'd be more expensive if you keep doing pieces.
That's, that's one of the reasons why.
You're gonna stop and start, you know, rather than doing it all at one time and everything there and done.
But then you, then you get into, if you do it that way, then you're going and getting funding about what versus trying to pay for it out of your funds. I mean, you have like right now, you have nine hundred thousand dollars in ARPA bonds, should it's signed, so it should be coming and that has to be designated to a project. Yeah, it's signed. We have fifteen days as of last week. So you can, you can allocate those funds to projects related to this because it's for water and sewer.
Yeah.
But then it's just trying, like I've said it and and I've said it to Charlie is that should should the city's street replacement project. Have a line item for BPW utilities. So cuz my guess is it's gonna change what that outcome through their algorithm comes out to be. Or you roles reverse it and say, well, how about the city looks at our projects and does it correlate to their street replacement? So that's where our pause, when you look at these, when we tackle these projects, we try and tackle all the utilities at one time because you're opening. Same with the city project. So it's not, you know, it's not conducive to say you're gonna do the water main and that's it.
I say, I say the city, when you're deciding, discusses our ash- a- aspect of the project. Don't, don't that mean?
So we ranked the streets based on the street assessment and then I communicate with Austin and Robin. About, you know, those streets that are on the priority list for the city about, you know, what are, what are the board's needs in terms of order.
Just did he ever changes priorities because of that? They put it, so our. Our names.
Yeah, they, okay.
But if you could include it as a line item on the the algorithm that Charlie uses for the street replacement, I would probably take a guess that it's gonna change some of them.
Yeah, we we can work on that. I know like for instance. On the street between inventory and and the spreadsheet that we put together. It's based on the street, but it has a line item for curb and gutter and sidewalk replacement too. Which is exactly what you're talking about. There's gifts of yet another line item for the utility that factor into prioritization.
But going the other way, do we typically make our decisions run it by the city before we finalize it?
Well, we, the problem is the most recent projects that we've done have been Del Dot roads. So Del Dot gets a brand new road out of this. And no cost to them.
But still.
So, yeah.
They don't, they don't replace.
No, that. They.
Whoever touches it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna just pull the pipes up.
Yeah, you know, it's flow film. Whole different discussion.
And in a sense, when we do those Del Dot projects, given their seasonal restrictions or seasonal. It's almost like similar to doing what Red does because, for instance, Pilot Town Road. You know, it couldn't have taken probably fifteen months or so to do the actual work if you could go. Fred, we spread it over three years to me their seasonal restriction, which means you were, the cost was spread out over three years.
Yeah. That's why when you look at Del Dot project.
Kings Highway with it, when they put their merry around then.
Yeah.
Is that impacting our utilities?
Hell, yeah, we're taking that approach.
So, yeah.
Cuz uh the way that it's set up now is you're gonna have utilities going straight to the center of this roundabout.
They won't reimburse us for that.
We are actively discussing that. Our approach is, yeah, it's gonna affect it. It's it's kind of like the discussion.
For water, sewer and power.
Water and sewer go straight down. Power's the same way cuz you may have to relocate. You have, we have underground crossings throughout there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a huge. A huge undertaking and should be.
Build them like any utility, I I private utility we're building.
Yeah, well, the way that it's been done in the past is it's it's basically a J account, but it's a J account. It's not reimbursed by the utility, meaning it's included in the scope of Del Dot and then Del Dot pays for it and then we accept. Responsibility after the fact.
All those poles that are all kind of to get there.
The ones that they're topped.
By the school that.
Yeah.
So such a mess.
That's, that's for eyes and communications. Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of times build out, man, pay if they think it's what they call it, it's betterment of.
Yeah.
But in this case, of of the roundabout project. There's no betterment involved. You know, there's gonna be water mains that are gonna be and sewer mains. And probably power lines that are running right down in the middle of those roundabouts, which is totally unacceptable.
Yeah.
I feel like they should.
I can see, I can see that like taking the roundabout. And saying, okay, we'll pay for that, but then BPW, you're paying for this piece, the straight section or something like that, but.
Well, yeah, like Austin said, they've been approached.
It's part of the franchise agreement that if their project necessitates. You know, relocation, removal, whatever, replacement of any utilities there, they pick up costs for that. Because the argument's gonna be, the argument's gonna be, does it really need to be replaced? We're, we, we have one meeting and it was a very.
It was before they had the public discussion where they gave the presentation.
And we made our case that we we do not want water and sewer going smack dab through the middle of the roundabouts, so. It doesn't make sense jogging around, so you're gonna need to move all that. I mean, it was such a preliminary meeting. No, nobody kicked back against that or anything like that, but.
Yeah, those, those lines are right on, right where the. Freeman Highway, Kings, they're on the inside of the road.
There's two mains that run. You have a sixteen that comes across. What is the Warranton Farm now? And then you have your twelve-inch main that goes down and then you actually have a reverse main that comes from the plant, the old plant. And comes down King. So you actually have, I believe, three water mains in Kings Highway. Maybe four.
When is their next update on that? Got you.
I haven't heard anything.
We're hoping they'll move that. School water bond due that they had on the.
Yeah, yeah, still there.
That's a couple of questions about the report, just to make sure I understand. Eighty percent of the criteria was the age of the pipe.
Yeah.
You got pipes here from monkey note four, it's green. How does that math even work?
So in in that, you're looking at table two, correct?
Page eight.
Yeah, so in that, that's our visual ranking. So the formula does not apply to the average ranking there. Right, the that, that's what we use as the basis to create the formula and apply it to the rest of the data. So that's based off of our visual rankings internal GMB. And I would also, like I was saying before, kind of that's. You know, based off of the data in the model, that pipe may not exactly be nineteen oh four.
I would bet that if it's, is it ranked like two or?
One point nine.
One point, yeah, I would say that's one of the line pipes.
And there's another one at nineteen oh four.
Yeah, that's really common in the normal year that in. Is innovative.
Dig into some of the appendices and you look at, you know, those correlation factors. I mean, it's a paint, it's a paintbrush trend, you know, I mean, it's not a, there's gonna be outliers.
So and just and I, maybe you guys did this, now even, do we get any updates on this over some from twenty twenty-one till now?
Uh, you mean during the course of this?
Right.
Updates, I mean, we've kind of maybe here and there talked to Austin about what we were doing, but nothing.
I think you guys should bring it up for the board cuz around here, you had, you had twelve people come up with twelve different criteria. I think we should have some input into what those criteria is are. This is a multi-year project. We should have had some updates and we could have scoped some things differently on how we think and what we believe. That actually could have added some value and made some different changes. So I think giving us information along the way would be very helpful.
But the twelve, and I agree with you, but the twelve people that looked at, they were looking at.
That was very.
Mechanical turbidity.
I'm not, I'm not.
Now, they, the twelve people weren't even. Now, they the twelve people weren't even looking at that. It was twelve people. We we could bring the samples in this or get the PowerPoint presentation. It was just looking. At all this twenty seven samples saying, hmm, this is in the best condition. This is in the worst. This one's in the middle. This one's number two. This was just ranking. So we. We had good correlation, good consistency there. And then we said, we then we dug down from there and said, well, what about, what is it about that? One that ran in the best condition? What what?
But I think the earliest point is the other things that were discussed here. How we could have been inputted or influenced the report.
Customer complaints.
So, well, yeah, that's interesting. The customer complaints. You know, we started out in the very beginning. Looking for that kind of information because again, I'll get on on personal level again, my father. Was in the Philadelphia Water Department, not apples, but apples to apples, it's a big city, but it is an old city. And he always told me the way they went about deciding what section of town was replaced, what are they? They they had a pretty sophisticated setup for documenting the number of breaks in a given area. And when they got to a certain threshold, they knew they time. And I remember as a kid growing up, every every other night in the winter, you know, they'd have on. The news app, you know, some big water main break and ice everywhere. And so they they charted all that and they, you know, they were, it was a specific program. They said, oh, wow, this section over here, overboard section. Oh, my goodness, we're getting a lot of breaks here. Kind of do a pro program there. But I don't know that we had such.
Well, I I agree with you too. And and I guess maybe this is the time to do it now. I think this should have occurred first. So we did third shot first, but now we can. Look at it, think about it. And I'm just saying, twelve people look, we paid twelve people to look at this from over the criteria. We should be a part of that process. That's all. We pay for go.
So we could have had more people.
No, no, I'm saying talk to us.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you need twelve people. I don't, I don't think, do need twelve people. I just say it should, this shouldn't be a big bang for twenty twenty more. It's a big bang. We should have had this along along the way, I think.
We know about this for a long time and we've been discussing it for.
Well, yeah, I think I think before it came out, Bonner Report, and it does, it doesn't have to be a Bonner Report. It could be an interim, first, you know, draft that we can comment on now. But I understand you have an degree.
Yeah, I I I I'm in agreement that. I just don't think the twelve people are the issue because they were ranking samples. It's the content of the report that we should have had. You know, some input, you know, discussions.
What I was forward with twelve people looked at and came up with it with the criteria. Each one, each one had different criterias and this became the final.
No, no, here's here's now, uh, so twelve people, you have twenty seven samples, right? Twelve people looked at them independently and they ranked, they said, this is the best, this is number two, this is number three. Then what we did.
Just visually visually.
So twelve coupons, twelve people looked at each of the coupons to make an assessment.
Yes, and then what we.
I I I should, it was a PowerPoint with photos of the exterior interior of the pipe and I spent twenty minutes ordering them more at least. That was.
So then what we did is said, okay, well, look at, let's look at. Let's look at the the best number one and what characteristics? Number one, the number one had. And then we said, okay, what pipes in the system matches characteristics? And they would be the greenest pipes, right? And then conversely, the worst, we said, well, we look at the worst, we say, why? What is it about that one that granted the worst? And again, remember what I said, twelve people looked at it with pretty darn good consistency. From one to twenty seven in the ranking, how how these twelve people independently rank with. And then. But then the struggle was to try to find out how each of those related to the pipes in the system.
Maybe customers.
Yeah, that's the part that was is, you know, like I said, tricky tricky business. I think I think if I hear you, what you want is. You you wanna know where you're gonna get the most bang for your buck in terms of impact to the customer.
And I and I think if we if we had done this phases and we had gotten updates, I think we could have provided some input and maybe even changed some math on on developing things. I'm just saying, it's it should, I don't want it to be a big three year big back. Thanks.
From.
Yeah.
It's the nineteen oh four.
Yeah.
So the idea out of this was we were gonna come up with an updated capital budget that would reflect kind of moving forward. Knowing what we know, you know, I have a general idea of kind of the areas that seem to generate the highest complaints. Um. There are some small things like you have that small section on New Road. That's an older pipe that, you know, just makes the most sense because we stubbed out. From the PVC main that's installed on Polytown and then you have PVC once it gets down past uh fourth. But then when you're in like that whole Burton, uh Burton Painter Park and Johnson, you know. This main. Uh, and the people online can't see, but this main is not in very good condition. Obviously, you can see the red that comes up here. That's a very old four inch. This is actually all PVC. Chip carpenters is all PVC and then it's stubbed down on either side and connects into to duct or to cast. So you you have duct wire in the ends here and you have PVC that was part of the Mariners Retreat project that comes here. So there you look at a project where you just connect in with PVC or duct to iron, connect those two stuff out. And you have this project that could be considered one to tackle.
Also, I think. Um, I think it'd be good if you had could compare a narrative like that so we can get it in front of us and because I often remember all the things that you're pointing out.
There's a sense at the end.
Yeah, there's. And I'm gonna. If you could kind of, what you're doing now, just kind of put it writing about what your impressions are of where things are happening. I think it'd be helpful to us that we could evaluate so we we know what you're thinking and maybe your recommendations, but.
Be a long one, but yeah, I'll try. I'll try and put it based off of this, but at the end of the day, take it into account. Kind of what we know of the customer complaints, the biggest bang for your buck from a hydraulic standpoint, because there's some.
I, yeah, I think that would be helpful because I I I I know you tell us from dawn to dawn where. Complaints are, I think would be good if you can consolidate that so we could reflect that only on this report. See how BPW's actual functioning impacts what they're recommending here. And roads being done or redone within the city by the city. It may link into some of these as well.
Like I, so.
Well, but GMB can probably do that for us.
Well, I know.
You have the rubber system, right, Charlie?
Yeah.
But they made, they made the decision whether they're gonna do it.
A lot of these, right, on this charter of Del Dot roads. I mean, Austin and I have been talking about. You know, if we do a major project, say like the Park Johnson corridor that you were just explaining, Austin, that you would add in the new road piece. As, you know, kind of an economy scale effort to. You know, it's not directly related to Park and Johnson. It, um, you know, you could add that in there and get it done at the same time.
So like Burton does not connect in at Queen Anne's in third. So that's dead end. Bradley does not connect in at Queen Anne's or third. That's a dead end. Fourth stops a Mariners Retreat and doesn't connect in at Ocean View. So like that, that, this whole pocket is essentially one large dead end that you have. And you know, the data, you go into this whole discussion on whether or not replacing this, you know, where where does your money go? Who does it affect? That is one of the ones that I've always looked at because you have, you know. You have brand new poly that's connected in to cast. You have two water mains that go from Park to Burton, but you have poly on Burton. But that doesn't connect in on Ocean View. You just did this brand new line here. So it's kind of like this hodgepodge. You got. The dead end here. So if you ever have an issue and your demand is pulled in this direction. Where does that water go from there? And we do, we get complaints over in the Polytown Village, which, you know, that line. In theory, would come from this twelve inch line that comes down, turns, goes into Sussex Drive and then goes through Sussex Drive into Polytown Village. Well, guess what's connected to it? That old cast iron main that comes from that section in the heart town.
That's one you're thinking about doing away with, right?
Yeah, and and we talked about that because we can, there's a gas main through here and then where the fields are gonna be. The access to that area, it was just, to me, it wasn't worth the investment of trying to get an easement through there and then deal with access. Instead, you you put an eight inch line in there with um far hydrant at the end and it meets.
Yeah, I always hate to delete the water line. That that looks like it's pretty important to connect. This side of town or the asset that's southern ended down with the northern.
But in the same time, what's the argument that you make the connection at fourth and it doesn't satisfy?
Yeah. And then we talked about running a line across the property we're trying to, the city's, somebody's trying to obtain. Uh, from uh. So fat over to New Room.
Yeah.
Through that, through that property.
Miller Farm.
That would be a major help. Does a water tower change any of this on what we would do first or second or third?
No, I mean, if you probably, if you were to turn around and ask GMV what the number one project is, the canal crossing, and it is for me too.
Not only as far as connecting the other areas and and making them loose.
It's the the water tower doesn't theoretically increase your water quality because you're still sending it through the same pipe, but it's not. You're still gonna have, I mean. So you're gonna now move all your productions out here. It's gonna go to your tower here and there. But all of your water that's being produced here is going through a duct to iron pipe, which I would believe looks really, really good. And if you go the other direction, then you're going down to Kings and Kings is old, old old.
I think you're correct, correct, what we heard from GMB is that. The water tower is gonna. It affects flow, but not in a material way that would affect the rankings of which you dance your.
Particularly since towers, the where where's coming from anyway. Yeah, they're constant, but.
So I think everything shifts, but it's not.
That loop through the Miller property. In our mind, it's a pretty high priority because you have a really long, basically dead end serving tower area, right? Right? So that's not factored into this, obviously, but you know, who who and how that's paid for.
That's that's another discussion.
That's that's why I'm concerned about the one you wanted to delete because it seems to do it these better helpful to get water over there.
Which one are we deleting?
The the idea was that the one that goes from Burton to Sussex Drive, that's a six, I believe.
There's Blockhouse Pond, yeah.
But the the argument to me would be if you take that offline and you connect four, I mean, you gotta think, you have no connection through here other than coming through this four inch line. So if you connect Burton to Queen Anne and Bradley to Queen Anne and here, there's three connections that never exist.
I think Ben, you modeled taking that out, so.
Yeah, we did. So so what's on the map isn't showing all the PVC mains there. So there is a connection from Seagull. Through Mariners Retreat over to Fourth Street.
Yes, through through here. But then there's nothing that connects from that direction.
That would be interesting to see the PVC lines too.
It's a. Except the one.
Okay, that's all on us, right?
There was a little thing.
Always do. That does sound.
Now I.
And I. Where you're coming from, I'm asking him.
Yeah.
For doing now, there, so would it be better if we had another meeting so he could go through this and we could be examining these? And the discussion rather than him preparing something with the, I I'm 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 available for another meeting if we want to do that.
I have it as on a line in next week. For the board meeting. I actually have it as page in the capital, but I can.
But but I think it's gonna be a long discussion like this that we want to have it in board meeting. Particularly since we're time, it's time sensitive and that's new.
It's completely up to you. I I can make, I can try and put narratives together tomorrow. And just have the overall discussion and then work with GMV on a more formal, but. I'm completely open either way.
I'm open. I hate that we don't have a meeting, but and I think we're gonna have extra time because it'll be. Yeah, give us a lot of time for that meeting. So I guess we could try to go to, if we don't get through it, we can.
Isn't a lot. On the agenda.
I mean, always famous last words. My wife says, how long are you gonna be? It's gonna be about.
Has it ever been an hour?
I get caught, I try. Yeah, I always ask you all the time.
Richard always asks me that and so we, you know, so he can. Put my thumb tag. Why don't we try, what can you do next week?
That's fine.
Yes.
Because we may have time because. We're starting.
Because we don't have to do a special meeting. We're kind of getting meetings.
I I I agree.
And so. All right.
Because, I mean, we're starting at noon. And we don't have to leave here until four.
Yeah, we have an executive session, which is.
We don't have an exec, do you have an executive session? I didn't say.
Not before, you have it after.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there's gonna be a fair amount on that one, so. All right, any other questions for our friends?
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Yeah.
I think I think it's. An excellent.
Great.
It's important.
Great, great information.
No, it's just. Yeah, I'll throw the material in for you.
Or find a pipeline set or something.
So what's the lead time for CHD being? In real life, thoughtful?
PVC shouldn't be, yeah, shouldn't be as long, yeah. Not not eighteen months, I can tell you that.
My change is unbelievable. A couple was I tried to get and they told me nine months.
Yeah.
They said the uh PVC that's laid out on three twenty four after they were raining.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I guess. That's a installation.
A lot of pipe.
A lot of pipe. That would be something. Not the PVC, most likely not. We're gonna.
What are we doing?
So have we done anything by the head of pipe for the world?
In terms of.
Order it or anything?
So we asked and they basically said, if you order before you close on the line, you won't get reembursed.
All right. So Charlie, are you back now?
Uh, mentally.
Yeah, I I'm gonna ask that question.
What do you mean back?
Psychologically.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought you meant. Yeah, um, yeah, I think so. Yeah, I was sort of in an Ashville state of mind for a good, for a good while then.
How long were you there?
Ten days.
Was that right?
Yeah, I mean, it's easy to get into that state of mind.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Nice.
I just there for a conference. Yes, two years ago.
Okay.
And we had a lot of time.
Yeah, it was pleasant.
What a grateful.
Yeah, please. I survived my bear encounter.
Oh, really?
Yeah. He walked, he walked right out in front of us. We were driving on this wood country, you know, mountain, country route. That thing was huge. He never even looked at us. The one time my wife didn't have a phone in her hand. Where's the data?
Be careful, she can listen to it.
All right. All right, no motion to go into executive session.
So move. Records.
Hold it a favor.
Aye.